All right. Good evening and welcome to the East Bridgewater School Committee meeting for January 12th, 2021. I would take a motion at this time, we are meeting virtually. I take a motion at this time to open the meeting.
I'll move.
Moved by Teresa, second by who?
Second.
By Ellen. All in favor will do roll call. Pennington?
Aye.
Higgins?
Aye.
Coligan?
Aye.
Alts? Ruda?
Aye.
McLaughlin, aye, please stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands. One nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. So first agenda item for tonight is a report from our high school advisory council, Carol Lonigan. Carrie, you there? Tara?
Yeah, I'm here.
Excellent. You're up first.
Awesome. So to start things off, the class of 2021 is doing a gift basket fundraiser. Our gift basket contains a bunch of gift cards to local shops around town. And if you want to buy tickets for that, please reach out to Mr. Ferrioli in the high school. Our DECA club just competed in their district's competition and results for that should be out shortly. And percussion ensemble and color guard are starting tomorrow. And if you want to join either of those, reach out to Mr. Hatchfield. And finally, I'm sure all of you know that the seniors are back. And I know it will be discussed later, but I just wanted to remind everyone that I will happily give my opinion as a senior when we do talk about it.
Sounds great.
And that's for me.
Thank you, Kara. Any questions for Kara? All right. Moving on, we have reported the standing committee. This is actually an agenda item in error. My memory was from our last meeting that we discussed that there would be an update from the policy subcommittee. And Mrs. Pennington very properly pointed out to me after the agenda was published that it was actually the next meeting that they were going to have an update. So there will be no updates in the policy subcommittee. Mrs. Pennington, you said it may actually not be the next meeting now, though, or maybe February?
Yes, because the sections that we're going through are large and I don't foresee the way that we have our meeting scheduled, they don't foresee us having it ready by the second January meeting. So most likely one of the meetings in February.
That's fine. Just let us know when you're ready and we'll put it on the agenda.
Sure.
Excellent. Thank you. Superintendent's corner.
Good evening. We see the return to school plan. We are still in conversation with the EBEA. We had a great meeting this afternoon to look over the MOA about the commissioners pushing us for more time on learning. We were short. You may know about six minutes a day. And so we had to go back into the MOA. We had a great conversation today. I think everybody understands asynchronous learning. I think everybody understands that we need robust instruction in the classroom. I think we're doing a good job. I think we, I think everybody understood in the meeting what we need to do to continue to get back to school. And if one of those ways is to just continue that robust asynchronous learning and being, whether you're remote or whether you're hybrid or whether you're in person, being able to have the students be up on their cameras for a full two and a half hours from the K through six or through, or being up for more than three hours at the high school a day is something that we would strive for and something that we would really want to be supportive of our teachers and offer them the support. We had a great conversation today. And at the end of that conversation, we continue to talk about the return to school plan. It is important for the district to understand that we will continue to look at data as we move through the COVID pandemic, the COVID pandemic that we are in. We are finding out, Dr. Williams and I have been on numerous, including Jay Fallon, including Karen Clifford, as I look around, especially Dr. Williams, and she can jump in on this as I speak. The amount of social and emotional issues that we are seeing throughout the Commonwealth and including our own district has increased over the last year. Just monumental. I just can't even put it into words. It's, parents need our help, kids need our help, and teachers need our help. Staff need our help. And the commissioner is pushing, the governor is pushing for us to return. We're not going to return to full, full in person until we feel that we are safe. However, I need everybody to understand that the data that the school district is provided is about the school district. Karen Clifford is doing a terrific job working with Sue Malloy in the local board of health and also working with Desi on a daily basis on getting the information she needs, feeding the information to the local board of health and vice versa from Sue Malloy, and also checking in with Desi, I think it's on a daily basis now just because everybody has seen a spike after these holiday vacation. Dr. Williams, I don't know if you wanted to jump in on some of the meetings you've been in about social, emotional and about the return to, about the return to plan, return to school plan.
Really just to echo your sentiments, I mean, nothing can replace traditional learning with students face to face with their teachers. But the data is showing across the Commonwealth that students are struggling with engagement, participation, and lack of connectedness. And the next best thing to getting those students live and in the classrooms is having them be able to connect live with their teachers online.
Thank you. Jake, do you want to add anything on that? And we do have most of the 504s and inclusion students in and those students in IEPs, but you might want to just jump in on this?
Yeah, I again, you know, just echoing the sentiments of both you, but also getting some of that data from the special ed angle, you know, listening to the department of ed, listening to our state director of special education. That social, emotional piece is huge, not only there, but just in the district. Parent conversations I've had with parents and family members. And I absolutely echo what you said was about staff too. I mean, sometimes staff are stressed out as well and we're, I think every district's dealing with it, especially as we go forward after the holidays here. But the state really is looking at the numbers of social, emotional needs of kids just getting amplified during this time. They're out of their structure, they're out of their routine, they're out of their normalcy. They're losing their socialization with their friends and with trusted adults. And I think that's one of the reasons why you also see the commissioner pushing and the governor pushing for that return to school as much as you can, as long as it's safe.
And thanks, Jay. Dr. Williams, you might want to weigh in on talking about the SLT, the time on learning just a little bit and about the survey that we took. We are, I think, in the 47 percentile. And maybe you could just explain that to the committee and why we went back into the MOA and let the, let the district and the community know that what we've got to do, this is a mandate.
Sure. The dashboard is public on Desi's website. So anyone can check that out by going into the structured learning time. And it's specifically focused on synchronous live opportunities for students to interact with their teachers. The two requirements are if you're in a hybrid model, you need at least 35 hours over 10 day period. And the reason why they've designated it as a 10 day period is because some school districts have a hybrid schedule like ours where students come a couple of days a week. Other school districts have alternating weeks. So in order to cover everyone, they have it over a 10 day period. 35 hours for live instruction. So you can count the in-person days as well as needing to count live instruction on the home remote days. If we were a fully remote school district, we would be obligated to 40 hours of live instruction. And as the superintendent said, we are falling a little short from that. Luckily, averaging it out at the junior, senior high, we're averaging 39 hours over a 10 day period. However, at the Mitchell and Central School, we have 26 hours according to our current MOA. So we want to get everybody the same equal opportunities for live interactions with their teachers. So we need to adjust the MOA to do that. The other requirement by Desi is that every student has a live synchronous opportunity every day. And I'm happy to report that that was already part of our MOA. So every student, every day has a live interaction with their teacher. So as you said, we're about 47% of the school districts that are out of compliance right now. And we're just short of it. We average 34 hours over a 10 day period. But as I said, there's an imbalance between the junior, senior high hours and the elementary hours. We just want to balance those out.
So we're going to work on that. We're going to continue to work on that time on learning. We had a great conversation today and I think, I think the teachers are with us and we're with them. And I think the support is there for the kids and I hope that we can get through this. But we're still going to continue to talk about the return to school. It's important for us to continue that conversation, keep it on the table, do not put it on the shelf. It cannot go on the shelf. I'm going to talk about seniors first, Karen, then I'm going to come back to get you because I think there'll be some things about that. Seniors came back.
Can I ask a couple of questions, mostly for Jay, I guess? I know Jay, you said we have most of the IEPs, 504s back. What are we doing with the seventh grade? I know there's a waiting list for those kids. Or I've heard, I shouldn't say I know, I've heard from parents that there's a waiting list that the seventh grade is too big, I guess. Are we looking at anything to try to get the rest of those kids back somehow?
So yeah, I think what you talked about Teresa is, I know talking with the administration at the junior, senior high, the seventh grade, it was about the specials and getting them into the specials. So I've met with the administration at the junior, senior high about trying to work that around so that we can get our kids in. Most of our students with disabilities are in. We do have a couple that, that because of numbers, they were trying to look at how do they best get them in. But most of our students, even seventh graders with disabilities are in. If there's a specific case, certainly have that parent contact me and I'll work with them.
And then my second question, I know, and I certainly agree, sorry for the bird. The social, emotional stuff is huge. We do have adjustment counselors, I believe, in each building. How are we utilizing them to address some of the social and emotional stuff?
So we do have, we have the social work interns at the school as adjustment counselors who are here in the building as well as some school adjustment counselors, like Ms. Jacobs at the middle school. And they're working with kids as they're being referred to them. They're working with them, they're addressing, addressing issues and they're working with families and they're reaching out to families. They're also doing, I know many of the social work interns are reaching out to our remote families. And they're, they're trying to keep those kids engaged and connected to help support those social, emotional needs. Karen, if I missed something, jump in. I know that you work with the, with the school adjustment counselors as well. So if I missed something, jump in.
No, I think it's important to know that the addition of the adjustment counselors helps us to really beef up that tier two because tier one is still guidance and guidance should be reaching out, working with the administration to determine who's not connected and then use the adjustment counselors as backup. So they are being used, they are running groups, they are helping to provide services, but that's above and beyond what the guidance counselors are also doing. And their, their focus, because we have adjustment counselors, is now to provide grade level intervention, meetings, groups, lessons, so that less student, more students will be supported and less students will need the tier two supports that the adjustment counselors and then the school sites would be providing.
Can I add one, one piece to that? The survey that we've talked about, that we conducted with all of our students in grades three through 12, there was an opportunity on the survey for them to speak to their connectedness with peers, their connectedness to adults. If there's any courses that they tend to be struggling in, if they'd like to talk to an adult. So we have all of that data and that was shared with the building administrators to then sit with the counselors so that they could specifically reach out to students who indicated on the survey either negatively indicated that they're not connecting or they referenced specific courses that they're struggling or if they'd like to talk to an adult. So we appreciate the honesty that we received in those surveys and we could directly connect our counselors with those students that expressed some concerns.
And just to add on further, that weekly, the principals, the building administrators are meeting with guidance, nurses, all of the child support staff to review students that are not engaging, whether they're remote, full remote or in person or on the in-person days or on the remote days. So those students are being tracked, grades are being monitored and guidance counselors and adjustment counselors are reaching out.
Thank you. So the seniors started back in on Monday. There was 47 that had, that returned and that we had in the building on Monday. Mr. Clements, I think, texted me probably about seven, eight o'clock in the morning and said everybody was in, plenty of room in all classrooms. They were walking around, working with teachers, seeing what was going on. Kids had a terrific day, talked to a lot of kids. The principals talked to a lot of kids and they informed Gina and I that during the lunch time or during the moving in the hallway, they asked the kids how things are going. Kids really liked, enjoyed being back. They liked seeing their peers. They liked being close to their peers. They want to be back. We were glad that we can get them back. We have the room for them. Again, if any student feels uncomfortable, they stay remote and they can be on remote at all times. But I'm very happy and very pleased that the students came back and where, and I can tell you, I heard kids laughing and that's what I like to see. And when I drove in today, I had a meeting at North River Collaborative this morning. And when I drove in today, it was nice to see the senior cars. We've, we've had an empty parking lot at the end of our parking lot where we drive into. It was really nice to see the kids' cars down there and to come in and see the kids. Kiara, I know that you wanted to jump in on this, so why don't you jump in now before Mrs. Clifford takes over?
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure. Yep.
Awesome. Yeah, so I was really excited to come back and in my opinion, it went really, really well. I know, like you were saying, a lot of kids were really excited to be back. And personally, I definitely felt that as well. As for being in the classroom, it did feel really safe. There was still plenty of room even with the extra seniors and it was really nice to be there.
Thanks, Kiara. Appreciate that.
Of the 47 that returned, how many were from the opposite cohort? In other words, was that 47 the people that would not have been there or was that total?
That was total that day. We have a lot of kids that are disengaged right now that, you know, say, you know, if I can stay home and I can be remote, I'm going to stay home. But we feel the administration and obviously the central office staff, we do feel that the more that the students interact, as Kiara was saying, they will start to, they will trickle back slowly but surely to get in there and see their peers. You know, this isn't about the prom, it's not about just graduation. This is about interaction with your peers. This is about getting in. And we know that the FACF forums, we've heard this, Karen's heard this, I've heard this, the commissioner is pushing. The FACF forums are down for families, they're down for seniors. We need to push them. We need to get them in. They need to speak to their guidance counselors, need to speak to their teachers in their classrooms. Colleges are still there. Colleges want to get our kids in. The armed forces want our students. There is a workforce that needs our students. There are community colleges that are ready for our students and we need to get our kids ready and to get them out there. So we're, I'm excited about having the kids back. I can tell you, I haven't seen Mr. Sylvia. And I think Gina would, Dr. Williams would say the same. He had some, some hop in his skip this week or in his steps. He was really smiling when he was walking around. Jay, I walked into your office today. He was smiling, talking to you. I mean, he's, he's excited. It's, it feels good. Dr. Williams may even say about her own son, you know, it was almost like the first, it was like being coming back in September. I asked her if she had gone out and bought new clothes for him to come back. But it's exciting. We're excited. It's a nice feeling in the school. And I'm proud of the teachers for staying in there with us, staying in the game and moving forward. I know it's difficult for them. I know they're nervous. I know that they, 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 it's, it's hard, but this is who we are. We chose education and we chose to be leaders for kids and that's who we are. So send your seniors back, get them in.
Liz, can I just weigh in before you bump it over to Karen?
Sure.
Just really quickly, just speaking as a parent, obviously of a senior, but just generally for all parents of seniors or probably a good number. Our seniors, our students, they have disengaged more than I think people realize. And it's quite sad. I'm personally speaking from experience. And I just, I want to echo the thanks to administration, to our building principals, to the teachers, to the staff because I know it's not easy and I know there's a lot of adjustments and none of this has been easy. But I just want people to know it's so, so very important. And you know, for those seniors who have chose to go full remote for, you know, whatever their reasons, hopefully as they feel safer or more engaged, you know, they can come back and share more of, you know, the last months of their senior year. But we just need to remember these seniors have lost, well, everyone's lost everything since last March. But this is it for these seniors. Like this is it. So whatever we can do for them to support them, and they do need support. They're not applying to colleges as they should be. I mean, some of them are, but it's, it's been very, very devastating to many. So I think this is a great thing that, that, that we've been able to do. So thank you to, you know, everyone's for their efforts and time, et cetera.
I think we had a good start, you know, Ducksbury is talking about coming back in February. They're getting their plan out with the elementary. Hanover brought the K-12 back. We're not, we're not in this alone. We're not the only community that is struggling and trying to get back. West Bridgewater, I know I spoke to the superintendent over there. And, and you know, they're looking at different ways of getting different students in and how to work with their seniors as well. So we're all in this together. Karen, I just want to mention that there was a town meeting last night, a special town meeting. We, we had an article on there for $53,000 for the sound system in our auditorium down at the Mitchell School. It was put off from last year. Mr. Noble had asked us to, if we could wait and he would come back around and get it and it was approved last night. So I want to thank the town for approving that special town meeting. And at the end of the meeting, they did move about, I believe it was $1.6 million from free cash into the capital stabilization fund for a rainy day. Because as you know, we're going forward, you know, out of this pandemic. So I'm hoping that that rainy day fund will be available for the community and for the schools and for anybody, other departments when we need it as we come out of COVID and this pandemic and using all the funds that we had, because that's what, that's what it's used for. So I wanted to make sure that people were out and about and saw that. And I received letters from the Administrative Assistance Association, Instructional Support Assistance Association, requesting contract negotiations to be opened. The Administrative Assistance Instructional Support Assistance Contract expires 6/30/2021. We're ready to talk to them. We'll be setting up meetings sooner than later. Karen, you're up.
Oh, boy. So I just want to touch back to what Trista was just talking about with the seniors. I know that this has been a difficult year. I know that seniors are disconnected. But I also want you to know that this is typical development for senior year. We are typically working our hardest in the guidance department for January and February to get those students connected. So there's something that gets lost over the, over the winter break. There are those students that start off really aggressive and strong and are very confident throwing out their applications. And then there are others that get them ready and kind of hem and haw a little bit and are a little bit reticent. So I don't think we're as far off the mark as you think with regard to the college applications. The guidance counselors are working with those students. They're reaching out to them constantly. They can have remote meetings. I think the benefit to the hybrid model is going to prepare these students for college because most colleges are still remote. So I think that that is going to be a silver lining at some point in the future. Right now it's difficult. So that being said, I just want to update on COVID a little bit.
Karen, can I ask a question about the college admission process?
Sure.
I know that every college is different, but are you seeing any kind of general message coming from the colleges in terms of what they're looking for for this year, for academic robustness? Or, you know, what they're looking for for kids out of their senior year?
So they're all, they have all come from a place where they just have either been full remote for the full year this past year and looking forward to not sure what they're going to be doing either. So most of the colleges have relaxed some of their admission dates. More colleges are waiving SAT and all of the colleges that belong to the Common App are using, the Common App has provided a new essay topic of how has the pandemic impacted you? So students are given the opportunity to say, this is where I struggled, this is how I helped. And that is any good college essay. It's not about your grandfather and how he taught you to be good. It's about because of this impact, what you did, how you have learned to be resilient or tenacious or persistent or whatever it is that you have become. And that just, those essays just help colleges understand the full scope of you as a student. They all understand, I believe, that last year's grading and this year. But I think that colleges for the past few years have been developing a freshman academy to help students transition. And I think that they are just going to beef up those efforts as they know that we are beefing up our efforts through the pandemic. Because they have had to create a response to their, their freshman class and every other class they had this year that was totally remote.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So as far as, so the COVID numbers, I know I've been posting them on Tuesdays and Fridays. Amanda, I was able to, I don't know if you saw, was able to, is that helpful? Is that what you were looking for?
Yes, thank you so much. I think this just gives us a better idea of overtime. I know like one of the news sites and anytime you see COVID numbers from the state, we're looking longitudinally. We're looking over time to see where the spikes are. And not that we want to panic anyone, but I think this gives at least me a better idea when we're thinking about making decisions where we are and where we have been. I really, really appreciate your effort. Thank you so much, Karen.
No, no, thanks for the suggestion because I know that people want more information, but you were very specific about the information that you wanted, so it was easy to respond to that. So I just want to kind of go over that, you know, obviously our numbers have jumped up a little bit since the fifth. Most of that response has been from over the break. So it's been, it's been the winter break. I think that we're at the end of that because any instances over the winter break, the quarantine would be up this week and students would be returning back. So I think now our next potential spike, and I'm hoping it's not going to be large, will be as a result of the testing that we conducted in East Bridgewater last weekend. But that will give us a really good picture, I believe, of asymptomatic people. Because anybody that was symptomatic and got tested should be in quarantine and I've been not notified. I have not been notified of anybody in that situation. I do understand that there was over 1,000 people, I think 1,037, Liz said, that tested over the weekend. Again, they're not all going to be East Bridgewater, but it should give us a pretty big, good picture of any asymptomatic people that we have in the building. To date, we still have not had one single transmission connected in school. We've had school students connected outside of school, but there has been no transmission that has resulted from an in-school contact. So although we quarantine students for close contact, the quarantine is continuing to work because students are quarantining and then they're not developing symptoms, becoming positive, coming back into the building. And then they're not developing symptoms, becoming positive, coming back into the building or spreading that.
And Karen, do, do you feel, I'm looking at the numbers, um, you know, from the onset, we've always told families, you know, if you've traveled, let us know. And I know there was some, you know, hesitation that people would, would, would do that, you know? Cause there are people who, you know, may not think to do that. But do you feel like we're getting a good number of people reporting when they travel? I mean, there's no way to tell absolutely everyone is, but.
I think, to be honest, the reminders that I've been sending out for right before Thanksgiving, as well as right before the Christmas break and the reminder. Um, before we return from the winter break about if you have traveled. I got a lot of emails that night, so it was, I think it was a timely reminder. I have to say, I think that the parents have been doing a phenomenal job keeping their kids home when they're sick. I can't even tell you how many emails that I get that say, you know, so-and-so's, my husband is a close contact. So we're going to keep the whole family home until he gets his test results. I mean, it's just an overabundance of caution. And I think that just goes back to the, the solidity, the, the strength of our. Remote learning model that we have in place, that it makes it fluid for those parents that can do that. So I think that parents have been very, very honest. We did have a kid that came in this week that said, oh, I was, you know. Away for the day and they didn't realize it and, you know, the staff is right on it. Faculty have been very good about just checking in with me and I've been able to say, I'm on it. Without really violating HIPAA, you can just say, yeah, I'm on it, but they've been able to give us some information. That they're getting directly from students or directly from parents. And I think that, I feel very confident that we're really doing a good job working with the board of health and. Tracing everybody that we need to trace and keeping track of everybody. The nurses have been phenomenal. They are just, they are working so hard.
And our numbers show.
And I said it last time, not as hard as Sumaloi. Nobody's working as hard as she is, but we are trying, we are trying.
Yes, and you guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
I'd just like to add, Karen, um, that we may want to just add that we, we were in our, the community task force meeting last Wednesday. That Chief Heron did tell us that the vaccination is here this week. He was vaccinate the EMS and police this week, uh firemen, uh EMS and police this week. He also extended to us, uh because our, the first phase, he has extended to us all of our nurses. Our nurses will be tested this week. Dr. Williams and Karen spoke to our nurses. Um, and they will be getting the vaccination this week. So I want to thank Tim Heron for that. Um, we also know that uh we look like the teachers, staff of the schools and the municipality. Or mostly of the schools, I believe the schools will be uh mid to late February, but it could extend to April. However, listening to what we've been hearing over the last couple of days, um, teachers are, it's getting closer to getting faculty and staff. Um, those P uh, uh, our food service, our custodial, our, our custodial, our secretarial um supports. Uh, we will be getting vaccinated sooner than later and we hope that it does come to the district. We hope that it will be Chief Heron and our E, our own EMS that distribute, that um distribute the vaccination. So that's, that's good news for all of us as well. And that's why I say we need to continue the conversation of reopening the schools. Um, I, I do want to just, lastly, um. I say this, I think, uh probably at ninety percent of the meetings, I'm going to say it again. Please, please, please be careful of social media and what you read and what you believe. Before calling the schools, your principals or us, call us directly, ask us the question, we will get the information out. There was a, a rumor that went very quickly. I was even called by a, a news organization. The flu is still around. It hasn't gone away. COVID is here, but it cannot take over our lives and we need to continue to look at real factual data. We know where our kids are. We have a great system, great administrative team at all buildings and they will track, investigate and come up with and find. And do the right protocols and talk about it, get it done and move it forward. I am not the morality police. I am not the COVID police and I am certainly not the parent of every child in this district. Over the weekends or on vacations. I implore our parents once again. Keep your children in your same cohort that you've been going out with and your friends, please. That's, I, I don't know any other way to say it, but they're, they're kids and they're seventeen, eighteen years old. And if you think that they're not going to kids' houses or hanging out with other kids, we're blindly mistaken. It's going to happen. We, uh, thank you Karen for saying it's, 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 it's fluid. Our remote program is fluid and we're going to stay on it. But when we, when we start tossing around information that is invalid or that you don't know or that you, or the school, you, you don't think that the schools have information on. We do, we're in it, we can't discuss it. It's called HIPAA and they're also our students and we don't talk about our students. And um, I want to say, nice job Karen and the administrative staff at the high school. And we're gonna, we're gonna continue to go, but please, before we listen to social media. Find out the facts, call us directly and uh we'll try to help out and move, and move that forward and streamline it for you. And Dr. Williams, you're up on the, the flu.
I'm going to jump to the, there's one more about the administrative assistance contract negotiations. Do you want me to? Jump ahead to that.
She, she mentioned that already a little earlier. I just want to mention, um, through that though, just to remind the members of the committee. So if the assistant principals contract subcommittee, it is uh Trista and Rob. And then um, is the ISA, is that certified professional contract? Is that what that is?
Teaching assistants.
Uh. Sorry, I was muted. Teaching assistants.
I don't see that. I see, we have bargaining subcommittees for certified professional contract, assistant principal contract and non-certified contract.
That's it, non-certified. Are your teacher assistants.
Uh, so that is uh Amanda and myself. So we will just, when we get dates to, to meet, just let us know.
Tim, I don't think there will be um a subcommittee or needed for um assistant principals.
Okay.
Um, I believe that we are going to have a conversation or we may have a one subcommittee meeting, but we are going to have conversations with the assistant principals. Their jobs are very different uh in each school. Um, and I think it's time that we have uh, that they are treated as uh like the principals. And what Deb Dupre and I are going to have a conversation. We started it last year, but I think it's a time where they. It, it's just, it's too hard. It's apples and oranges when you go from building to building. Um.
Sure.
And what we go, so.
Okay, thank you.
So as we talked about at a previous meeting, the Department of Public Health um is now expecting that the flu vaccine becomes part of the immunizations. That students are required to have for enrollment in school uh or exemption uh from them due to medical or religious uh reasons. So um, the, the state initially had uh January one, um, they did adjust that so that it's by March first. Uh, so you have in your packet our recommendation for a letter that would go out to everyone within the school community. Basically informing uh all families that uh this is now an obligation that students have the, the flu vaccine. Uh, for this year, they need it by February uh twenty-eighth so that they can uh continue to attend school in person. Or access any um activities or, or sports uh on school property. Um, also within that is uh frequently asked questions that the state put out. So we'll include that for all family members to just have a better idea of uh the state reporting that it will be part of, uh, the obligation going forward. Um, it will be, uh, the date will be adjusted after this year that by January first each year, they'll need to have the seasonal flu uh vaccine. And then there is a letter in there that will go out specifically to those families who have not um. Submitted documentation uh of either the vaccine or the exemption. Um, you know, in um. Parts um of the responsibilities of the nurses, in addition to all the COVID um tracking that they've been doing. They have been reaching out to families, reminding them of uh the need to provide documentation. Um, when I met with our lead nurse, Mrs. Berendret last Thursday, we were at about seventy percent compliance in the district. Um, with six hundred and thirty-three students still remaining that have not submitted documentation. About three hundred and seven students at the junior senior high school, a hundred and eighty-six at the Mitchell and a hundred and forty at the Central. And this is the entire district, even those students that are working fully uh remote right now. Because at any point in time, these students could return back to in-person learning or they could be accessing our activities in sports. So we want to just make sure that everyone is in compliance of that. So uh with the committee's approval uh tonight, these letters will then go out um to families. Uh, one informing them of the overall expectation, but then specifically to those families that need to comply by February twenty-eighth. Uh, February twelfth, right before the February break, we will give a list to each of the building principals of the students. Who still have not complied so that they can start making plans for our students who may need to go full remote until they come into compliance. Uh, and then as of February twenty-fifth, will be that final list to the principals for them to directly reach out to those remaining students' families. To let them know that they, if they are in person, they will need to go fully remote until we have the documentation in place.
Can I ask a question?
Quick couple of questions about this. So um, a committee member asked me earlier today about, um, you know, the idea that we're meeting remotely today. And you know, this, this idea was brought up at our last committee meeting, which was also remote. And um, that, you know, vaccines are obviously a very touchy subject in the public for a variety of reasons and. And perhaps it might be a good idea for the public to have an opportunity to speak at one of our meetings before we voted. Um, either way, which that in and of itself, I don't think is, is a bad idea. Um, my question for you is, I, I don't understand if this is a, um, if this is a mass DPH policy. Then what role does the committee have in even weighing in on this? We can't override DPH. So why, why is the school committee's involvement in this topic even necessary?
I think it's more just um information for the committee. I mean, certainly a, a school district could have decided to adjust that date. The very latest that with that expectation has to be out there is March first. However, because this information has been out there sooner, um, other districts have already put something in place where compliance needed to happen. Uh, prior to the March first, but we're, we're taking it to the very last um day that families would need to have their documentation.
Okay.
So this is a mandate from DPH.
Correct.
Unless someone has.
Yes, just like all the other vaccination requirements and, and we're obligated to report this. I think it's like kindergarten, grade seven, grade eleven, uh, the, the grade levels that we have to report to the state that students are up to date with their vaccinations.
I bring this up just because I think it's important for the public to realize that the committee doesn't have the right to overrule DPH. We don't have the right to waive this requirement. We don't have the right to say flu vaccinations will not be required. Um, that's why I bring that up.
And also, isn't there, um, there's a, there's a, a report that comes out from the state. So even if, even if families or parents don't let the school know, if their children's names come out on this list from the state, then. Then that they can see that they got the vi- the vaccination, correct?
Um, actually, no, because my pediatrician's office for some reason never, it. He was vaccinated back in September. So I was told by the school nurse that not all pediatric practices feed into that state feed. So parents do want to do their due diligence to make sure, you know, obviously if they get a letter, they'll know that they, they don't have it on file. But I don't believe that all pediatric offices feed into that state feed. That's what one of the nurses told me.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Tim, I actually dug on DPH a bit and I did read, um, and I may have read it incorrectly, um, so I'm going to dig a little more. Um, that, no, we can't change the mandate, but we as a school committee could choose not to. Enforce the mandate, so to speak. I may be wrong on that. That's what I read. Listening to Gina now makes me question when I read, what I read. So I want to, um. We look at that. Um, I mean, the letters going on for this year, I, I certainly wouldn't. Have an objection about, because I, I didn't read it relative to this year. I read it relative to going forward. Um. But just so you know, that, that's kind of where, where I was on why we shouldn't vote because I think there may be a vote that we can take or not take is the case maybe.
Okay. Dr. Williams, I'm sorry, I cut you off. Did you have any other parts of this?
No.
Okay. Um, so superintendent, I know, I know that, that we were going to move on to action items, but maybe since this is an action item, we could just kind of address this first. Um, so, so the recommendation was made by a committee member um to me individually before the meeting. Or the request was made that we kind of table this um until we meet in person two weeks from now. Um, where if there are members of the public that wanted to speak to it, um, they would have the opportunity to do so. Um. Are there, are there any committee members that have an objection to that?
Well, I'm concerned in that, I'm not opposed to, you, you know, having further conversation, et cetera. But if you're bumping up against the requirement of March first, if we delay this communication to the parents. Some parents may not be, I mean, I'd be surprised you, that there are some that might not be aware of this, but there probably are. And if you delay this communication by two more weeks and then you're pushing them up to a two-week period to get a flu vaccination, that could get a little tricky. And they may not want their kid to go full remote or, or what have you. So I, I would suggest that the communication still be sent.
I don't think there's anything wrong with the district combining parents of the DPH, um, you know, a policy. Um, but I think anything regarding being sent home that says the school committee voted or, you know, a school committee, you know, that, that, I think, I. I think having the public weigh in and that would be important, um, as long as the public aware of what our restraints are on that.
But, so, well, one thing for people to remember is that the parent can always opt out because of religious or, um, or medical reasons.
Correct.
So they may not, they may not technically qualify for those, so. I agree with you, Amanda, and but practically you may not qualify.
Okay.
So is the request that we keep uh the letter, the communication that's been going out so far, we have not put in it that the deadline of. As of March first, they will not be able to attend any um on-campus learning. So just continue to have a soft letter that we're encouraging them to get their vaccine?
I think for the next two weeks, that would be the sensible way to go and that'll give us the ability to have that meeting where again, if the public wants to weigh in. And, and frankly, I want to, I just want to ask a question um of our, our council on what our legal, you know, parameters are on this. Um, just so we understand what we're voting for. Okay, so hearing no other objections or comments, we'll, we'll table that until um the January twenty-sixth meeting. Uh, action, uh, sorry, take a motion, excuse me, we'll take a motion at this time to um. Approve the school committee meeting minutes from December fifteenth, twenty twenty and December twenty-second, twenty twenty.
Can we do those as two separate votes? Cause I was abstained from the.
Sure.
Uh, twelve fifteen meeting.
For sure. So we'll take a mo- motion on the December fifteenth, twenty twenty minutes. Uh, moved, I think by Teresa.
Second.
By Ellen. We'll do roll call. Uh, Higgins.
Hi.
Pennington.
Hi.
Olligan.
Hi.
Alts.
Hi.
Ruda, uh, you have to abstain.
Abstain.
McLaughlin, aye. Uh, take a motion to approve the minutes of December twenty-second, twenty twenty.
Double.
Moved by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Trista. Uh, Higgins.
Hi.
Pennington.
Hi.
Olligan.
Hi.
Alts.
Hi.
Ruda.
Hi.
McLaughlin, aye. Um, I'll take a mo- motion to approve accounts payable warrants, uh, excuse me. Uh, two-five SV dated twelve sixteen twenty twenty and twenty-seven, sorry, that's twenty-five SV dated twelve sixteen twenty twenty and twenty-seven SV. Dated twelve thirty twenty twenty. SV dated twelve sixteen twenty-twenty, and twenty-seven SV dated twelve thirty twenty-twenty, and twenty-nine SV dated January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Done.
Moved by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Trista, Higgins?
Hi, sorry.
Pennington?
Hi.
Coligan?
Hi.
Walts?
Hi.
Ruda?
Hi.
McGlaughlin, aye. Uh, take a motion, uh, to accept payroll warrant twenty-six, sorry? Okay, uh, take a motion, uh, to approve, uh, payroll warrant twenty-six PS dated twelve twenty-three twenty-twenty, and twenty-eight PS dated one-six twenty-one.
Done.
Moved by Teresa. Second by, uh, I'm sorry, mister that was, Coligan?
It was Coligan.
Higgins?
Hi.
Pennington?
Hi.
Coligan?
Hi.
Walts?
Hi.
Ruda?
Hi.
McGlaughlin, aye, we are a lively bunch tonight, all right. Um, I, that is also, uh, further comment to the, or questions at this time?
Tim?
Yes?
Uh, one, one, one thing, uh, John Shea, uh, is just not another pretty face in the square up there tonight, we, he's going to hold off to the next meeting to go over some of his, uh, uh, the budget that we've been talking about, we, uh, we are going to put up, uh, a date to get another, to get another budget subcommittee meeting. Um, we did meet, you know, as you know, that John and I will continue to meet with the town administrator, and also, um, FinCom as we move forward. Um, so we have a meeting with, uh, we had a meeting with Brian Noble, he was very pleased with the budget that we had started to put together, and, um, the line items that we, uh, that we moved around, and, and some of the savings that we did, and, and what we've come through with so far in our conversation that we had in our first budget subcommittee, um, and that was, we put that all together, uh, we spoke to Brian about, uh, Mr. Noble about that, uh, the finance committee had contacted me to, uh, set up a meeting for John and I just to start to talk about it, and then we're, um, but we're going to put up a calendar date for the subcommittee for probably next week sometime, early week, uh, so that John and I can sit with, uh, the subcommittee and go over some of the initiatives that we're talking about. Um, the principals have gotten a lot, um, of the operational, and Dr. Williams will still meet with the principals, um, and Mr. Shea one more time about personnel, um, on the curriculum and instructional side, and what we're looking at. Um, Jay Fallon will probably come into that conversation as well, uh, just because of the compensatory services that might or will be, have to be provided at some time, as the, as per requested by Desi, that we were to pull back on compensatory services at this time and get students back in, if I'm not correct, Jay, and that we would fill in compensatory services moving forward by bringing in more support staff into the school year, um, moving on twenty-two, twenty-three. So, there's some convers, we are good, uh, with what we've done, John said terrific job, again, putting it together for us, and, and getting our needs and our supports out there. However, there is, there is some more steps in there, uh, that Dr. Williams will have to weigh in on, um, for curriculum instruction, that piece is all done, but when it comes to personnel and what are the needs, uh, that the principals are seeing at this time. So those are the next kind, that'll be the next phase of conversation for the subcommittee. Okay, Ja, John, am I right on, right on target with you there? You watching the football game again? Okay. Before we adjourn?
Yes.
Um, somebody just messaged me, um, and asked the question, I don't know the answer, and since you're going to speak to council, uh, I'll defer it to you on this flu shot thing with the litigation currently pending, can we even vote on it and/or enforce it? And I don't know the answer. I, I know we have a couple members of the community...
I'll contact Nick this week and ask him some questions, and ask him to write a quick little board to the committee explaining what our responsibility is in this.
Yeah, just ask about that pending litigation, because I honestly don't know.
Yeah, well...
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'm going to take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Done.
Moved by Helen, second by Higgins, roll call, uh, Higgins?
Hi.
Pennington?
Hi.
Coligan?
Hi.
Walts?
Hi.
Ruda?
Aye.
McGlaughlin, aye. Have a good night, everybody. Uh, as a reminder to the public, we will be meeting in January twenty-sixth.
You well, everybody.
Thank you.